I appreciate you all making the effort to get here, so let's just get going. Please find a seat. For those who are in the Performing Arts Center, they'll be having a video and audio feed in there, so they'll be seeing and hearing what we're saying. If anybody wants to speak from there, there's also an assistant moderator in there who will recognize them and then they can come in here to speak. I'm Angela Harkness, Westford's Town Moderator. Thank you to all of you who are here this evening, and a special welcome to those who are new to Town Meeting. There are nine articles on the warrant tonight. In deciding these as the legislative body of the town, you will be determining how our tax dollars are spent and the local rules we live by. In a democracy, every vote you cast is important. Here at Town Meeting, your voice and your vote affect issues that are closest to our everyday lives. Thank you to WA for hosting us and to the students who are here helping us tonight. Thanks also to our Town Manager Kristin Lass, Town Administrative Staff, and our Buildings and Facilities Staff who have arranged things for our comfort and convenience. You would be surprised at the effort that goes into arranging one of these. Also, thank you to Westford CAT for their excellent coverage of this event, and of all things, Westford. A few informational items. If you don't know by now, the bathrooms are out the door and down the hall. Hearing Assistance Headsets are available at the teller's desks in the back. Children are welcome at Town Meeting and may sit with you in the audience as long as they don't disturb the proceedings. For those who may not be aware, the town provides free childcare and free transportation to and from Town Meetings. You might want to avail yourself of one of those in the future. We have meeting mentors here tonight. Mentors, can I ask you to stand, please? They're at those red flags. They can answer any procedural questions you may have during the meeting if you don't want to approach the microphone. When you checked in, for those in this room, you were given a clicker and an orange voting card. In the PAC, you have the orange voting cards only. We'll be using the clickers in here and the orange voting cards in the other room. So if you're sitting in this room and you don't have a clicker, please go to the back and get one now. And please don't forget to turn your clickers in at the end of the night. There'll be a box at the door. If you happen to take one home by accident, please return it to Town Hall when you can. Don't just keep it, they cost money. There are three microphones that any voter can use to address the meeting after being recognized by the moderator. You can use whichever mic is closest to you. If you do stand up to speak, please show your orange voter card and follow the instructions on each mic. State your name and address. Keep your comments brief and to the point. Don't repeat what others have already said, and if you have previously spoken on an issue, let others who haven't speak first. We'll be using the scoreboard clock here as our speaker clock. The scoreboard clock will note when you've been speaking for more than two minutes. Generally, people don't speak for more than two minutes. Often, people don't want to hear you for more than two minutes. The clock will not buzz. That would be scary, so please self-regulate. Don't make me have to scold you. By law, non-voters may not address the meeting unless given permission by the meeting after an appropriately made motion and two-thirds majority vote. Excluding children with their parents or town employees and consultants, all non-voters should be seated in the PAC where the meeting is being broadcast. If you are a non-voter, please move to the PAC now if you're not already sitting there. We'll be working from this Harvest Gold Special Town Meetings booklet. The motions booklet lists all the motions we'll be discussing and the recommendations of various town boards. If you don't have a Harvest Gold motions booklet, you can get one now at the table in the back. Or if you would like to follow along online, although the wifi's not great in here, you could go to westfordma.gov/stm2023. Now, two housekeeping motions before we begin. First, as previously stated, non-voters may not address the meeting without your permission. I'll ask now that Town Meeting allow Town Council, Town Employees, and Town-Hired Consultants who are not Westford voters but who will be participating in our discussion by virtue of their positions to make presentations and to answer questions. May I have a motion to allow those individuals to address the meeting? Is there a second? This requires a two-thirds vote. We are going to have to use our clickers because we have two meetings going on, two rooms. So if you're going to vote yes, please press the green button. Oh. One moment. I have a walkie-talkie that allows me to communicate with the other moderator in the PAC. It's so exciting. I never was able to play with walkie-talkies as a kid, only my brothers were. If you are in this room and you don't have a clicker, you won't be able to vote. So if you're in this room and you don't have a clicker, if you want to vote, you need to move to the Performing Arts Center across the hall. Okay, just to explain the motion again. We are asking that the Town Employees, Town Council, and Town-Hired Consultants who are not Westford voters but who will be participating in our discussion by virtue of their positions to make presentations and to answer questions, we're asking that they be allowed to vote. The motion has been made and seconded. For the benefit of the PAC, the motion is that Town Council, Town Employees, and Town-Hired Consultants who are not Westford voters but who will be participating in our discussion by virtue of their positions to make presentations and to answer questions, the motion is that those folks be allowed to address the meeting. It requires a two-thirds majority vote. Okay, so everyone who wants to vote yes on this, please, the voting is open. Press your green button to vote yes, your red button to vote no on your clicker. Green button for yes, red button for no. Isn't this fun? Not while we're voting, please.
That's kind of my, a lot of people here that don't know about the use of the clickers and how that works. It might be good to kind of recap that because there's a lot of new voters here tonight.
Okay, so this is your clicker. At the top, there's a green button numbered 1A, and under it, a red button numbered 2B. The green button is to vote yes. The red button is to vote no. This is great practice, but we won't do it again unless we have to. So... Yeah. If you've already voted, you can change your mind anytime until the voting closes by pressing the other button. You can't vote twice, and none of the other buttons on the clicker do anything. So it's just the red button and the green button. Is that clear? There's also a little screen, an LED screen, that'll give you an okay when you voted. However, it takes a little bit for that oka... You see how slow this is going? It takes a little bit for that okay to come up. It can take as much as 30 seconds. You can always press the button again if you're unsure. It won't let you vote twice. Okay, voting is closed. The motion passes by two-thirds majority. He already told me. It also passed at the PAC, in the PAC. All right, let's try not to do that unless we have to. So the next housekeeping motion is to allow the full text of the motions that we'll be voting on as it appears in the Gold Motions booklet. Rather than requiring me to read every word, may I have a motion to accept the wording as it's printed in the motions booklet for each article? Is there a second? Now, to explain to everyone who may not have been here before, what that means is the motions you see in this booklet are the motions we're voting on. I will usually explain them in a more concise fashion, so I don't have to read every word of each motion, but they are, in fact, what's in this booklet. Okay, anybody have any questions about that? All right. This is a majority. We're going to try and do this on a voice vote in both rooms. Okay, so the motion is to accept the wording of each motion as it's printed in the motions book without the moderator having to read it for each motion. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes. It is not unanimous. Let me check with the PAC. The motion passes. It is not unanimous. Okay. So finally, I want to tell you that I emphasize every question is welcome. You can ask about the facts or procedures of any article or process. If you have a question about something, someone else in the hall probably does as well. With regard to the manner of speech from the floor, many years ago, a good friend of mine pointed out that other voters are more likely to listen to you if your argument is presented calmly and without personal or disparaging content. It's something to keep in mind if your goal is to persuade other voters. So with that, let's turn to page three of your Gold Motions booklet so we can begin.
Madam Moderator, Arnie Price, Oak Hill Road. When we use the clickers, how are we in this room going to know what the vote is in the other room?
So that there are no clickers in the other room. They're all here. The assistant moderator in the other room is taking a count or a voice vote and reporting to me by way of walkie-talkie.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. As you can see on page three, I proposed a consent agenda consisting of Articles 1, 2, 5, and 8. These are articles that repeat year after year or that are routine and generally non-controversial. As a means of saving time, we could vote on them all at once instead of voting on each of them one by one. However, if any voter has a question or a concern about any one of these articles, please say "hold" loudly when I describe that article from your seat, and we will pull that item out of the consent agenda to answer your question or hear your comment. Does everybody understand that process?
Stand by, please stand by.
Not so much in the PAC.
The room says they cannot understand what is being said.
I'm sorry, we're trying to arrange things in the PAC so that they can see and hear what's going on. All right. I think we've got that as much resolved as we can. We'll keep going, and hopefully, it's going to work out. So we are on the consent agenda. These are items that are routine and non-controversial. As a means of saving time, we can vote on them all at once instead of voting on each one by one. However, if any voter has a question or a concern about any of these four articles, we'll pull it out and discuss it separately. I'm going to describe each of the four articles briefly and pause for a minute after I make the description. If anyone has a question about any of these four articles, please say "hold" loudly from your seat, and we'll pull that out to discuss it separately. Everybody understand that in here? Okay. Article 1 asks for your approval for certain appropriations and budget reductions necessary to balance the town's fiscal 2024 budget. Article 2 asks for your approval to allow the Select Board to budget funds received from statewide opioid settlements under the terms of those settlements. Article 5 asks you to rescind previously authorized amounts for various capital projects which are complete. These amounts were never borrowed and are no longer needed, so you're rescinding your authorization for those amounts. Article 8 is to allow the School Committee to enter into a five-year school bus contract. Right, that is the consent agenda. I didn't hear any "holds" here in the gym. Let me just check the PAC. All right, we'll pull that one out. Okay, we have a question from the...
On one.
So one and five? I mean, I'm sorry, one and eight? All right. Okay, we have questions from the other room on Articles 1 and 8, so we're going to vote on Articles 2 and 5. In this room, we're going to take a voice vote. All in favor of the consent agenda, which now consists of Articles 2 and 5, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The article's passed by a majority, but it is not unanimous. In this room. Well, my reputation for being able to predict how long Town Meeting is going to take is shot. It's completely shot. Okay, we are all set. Articles two and five have passed. The question from article one has been resolved. And the question from article eight has been withdrawn. So let's vote first on article one. All in favor of article one, please say "aye." I'm sorry, sorry. I'm sorry, you have to go to the microphone. I can't hear what you're saying.
Chris Kluntz, Texas Road. As part of parliamentary procedure, the entire body should be aware. If a question was asked in the other room and answered, people here should know what that question is and what the answer was in case it might sway a vote or opinion or how people would vote.
The assistant...
We're supposed to be of one body.
The assistant moderator in the other room informs me that the question about on article one was not a question. It was just someone who wanted to vote against it. And the question for article eight was withdrawn as if the person didn't come to the microphone.
Thank you for explaining that. It wasn't clear when you said...
I apologize about the first question. Thank you. No. All right, let's just voice vote article one again, just to be sure, because we were sort of interrupted in the middle of it. All in favor of article one, please say "aye." All opposed, please say "nay." The article passes. It is not unanimous. And we have the same results in the other room. All right, so now we are at article eight. To allow the school committee to enter into a five-year school bus contract. Yes.
Mike Westner, 12 Bradley Lane. People wanna know how many people are in the other room?
There are somewhere between 150 and 200. Does that answer your questions sufficiently? Okay. All right, article eight is to allow the school committee to enter into a five-year school bus contract. All in favor of article eight, please say "aye." All opposed, please say "nay." It also passes, but it's not unanimous in both rooms. Okay. Articles one and two having been disposed of, we'll move on to article three. Article three has two separate motions in it. The first motion of article three asks that the town appropriate the sum of $365,000 from free cash and $600,000 from the Water Enterprise retained earnings for certain capital expenditures as follows. $15,000 for the DPW garage replacement compressors for the HVAC system. $200,000 for the police station attic and pipe insulation. $150,000 for the Stony Brook Bridge resident relocation and right-of-way. Okay, we're gonna discuss the whole article for whoever just... And then from Water Enterprise retained earnings, $350,000 for the Forge Village Treatment Plant repairs and $250,000 from the PFAS Treatment Facility's preliminary design. Is there a second to article three? All right, we do have... Dan O'Donnell, Director of Finance.
I'd like to make a motion to reduce the amount for the Stony Brook Bridge resident relocation right-of-way from $150,000 to $100,000.
So motion to amend. Is there a second to the motion? So we're asking to reduce the amount being requested in the third item from $150,000 to $100,000 for the Stony Brook Bridge resident relocation and right-of-way. Are there any questions or comments about this article? This first motion under article three? There are no questions from the other room either? Please go to the microphone.
Jerry Sano, Buckboard Drive. A question about the $200,000 for insulation. When we built this very expensive police station, did we not insulate the attic?
So we are just voting the amendment right now, but please stay right there at the microphone so you can ask that question after we vote the amendment. All right, all in favor of amending this article to reduce the amount for the Stony Brook Bridge relocation from $150,000 to $100,000, please say "aye." All opposed, please say "nay." The motion passes. It is not unanimous.
Yes, but it was not unanimous.
Okay, the amendment also passed in the other room. It was not unanimous. Now, sir, can you repeat your question?
Yes, I'm just wondering, when we built the very expensive police station, did we not insulate the attic? That we now have to spend $200,000 to insulate an attic?
Oh, yep, he did before, but could you please repeat your name and address?
Jerry Sano, Buckboard Drive.
Thank you very much, Jerry. Jeff Goodwin, Director of Facilities.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Yes, back in 1999 when the police station was built, the attic was improperly insulated at that time. Over the years, that insulation void has caused substantial sweating of pipes, especially during the summer months during cooling season. And it's creating an unsafe condition inside the building. Obviously, excess humidity leads to mildew and saturated ceiling tiles, and it's just creating a poor indoor air quality environment.
So it wasn't vented properly?
Correct. The attic was designed to be a completely conditioned space.
The money we spent, we didn't vent the attic properly.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other... yes?
Philip Schreier. Just a question. What is the Stony Brook Bridge resident relocation?
We have Paul Starrett, Town Engineer.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Paul Starrett, Town Engineer. So the Stony Brook Bridge on Stony Brook Road needs to be fortified. And unfortunately, because when they close the bridge to do that work, as you all know, anyone who's driven this road before, there is a railroad bridge that only has eight-foot clearance. So we will need to relocate a resident during the time that the bridge is closed so that they can enjoy the benefits of a fire truck or ambulance coming to their home.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes.
Sean Knightley, Depot Street. On the $200,000, can you just clarify that you're gonna resolve the existing issue so that it doesn't continue after we spent $200,000?
Thank you for the question. Jeff Goodwin again.
Yeah, so the scope of this project, it includes insulating the eaves of the attic as well as some of the exterior walls between the second floor and the attic as well. It includes the insulation of pipes and ductwork, retro-commissioning of the heating and cooling plant as well and the building management systems. And we're also budgeting money to replace any equipment that is found to be defective during the retro-commissioning process. It's our belief that all of these measures combined will mitigate the humidity and moisture issues in the attic.
Question about the million dollars for the new roof, the havoc. And I'm wondering, how many bids did you get on this? It's a lot of money.
I'm sorry, are you talking about the roof at the Blanchard School?
At the Blanchard, yeah.
Yeah, we're not there yet. Stay at the microphone. We're at the first motion, which doesn't include that. That's a separate motion. Okay, but stay there, ask your question. One second.
My name is Kathleen Lolloman. On Timberly Lane. Regarding the police repairs, you're not mentioning anything about taking care of the ventilation, which apparently was the problem. I understand you're talking about insulation, but isn't that going to just get that to further be a problem down the road if you're not gonna address the venting too?
Did you hear that, Jeff?
So as I mentioned before, the attic was designed to be a completely encapsulated, insulated, conditioned space. And currently, what's happening right now is hot air and cold air entering the attic through these un-insulated areas, and it's causing a sweating effect on the pipes. So once we eliminate the air infiltration into the attic, that will hopefully mitigate the humidity.
Okay. 88 Chamberlain Road. My question is, I believe it's the code requirement for ventilating attic spaces even if they're insulated. So ventilation would be a valuable element here.
The attic is mechanically ventilated.
Does that answer the question?
You say that the ventilation failed and that was the cause of the problem.
The question is, would you say that the insulation failed and that's the cause of the problem? Ventilate... I'm sorry, the ventilation failed and that's the cause of the problem?
No, the ventilation did not fail. The ventilation cannot keep up with the amount of humidity that's in the attic currently.
Sir, at the center microphone.
Tom Allen, Granville Road. So when you do engineering plans for HVAC systems, attics and things like that, you have to do stuff like manual J and other calculations on those. How was moisture and humidity not picked up on these engineering plans? And why are we held responsible if the design was not done properly?
I think that's a fantastic question. I unfortunately cannot speak to what was done and what wasn't done back in 1999 with the engineering and the mechanical plans of this building. My job right now is to correct these issues at this point. So completely valid question, but it obviously wasn't picked up on. And I think this issue is more of an issue of quality control when the building was built. We're finding several instances where the insulation just wasn't done properly, installed properly, or just not even at all, so...
Sir, microphone to my right.
Michael Patton, Plain Road. Has anyone looked into if we can file a claim against the engineers Arizona Omissions Insurance from 1999 that designed this building? If you stated it's an engineering issue and they're still in business, why would we not have the right to place a claim on their insurance?
We have not done that yet currently, but potentially we could look into that. Thank you.
At the center microphone.
Denali Delmar, Dunstable Road. We have a lot of important things to talk about. I'd like to move this question.
All right, we have a motion to move the question. That means it would end debate on this motion. We have to vote on that first. It requires a two-thirds majority. I'm just gonna check with the PAC. All right, all in favor in both rooms, please say "aye." All opposed to terminating discussion, please say "nay." All right, let's see what happened in the other room. I'm gonna ask you to raise your hands in here. Raise your orange cards. All in favor of terminating discussion, please raise your cards. All right, put them down, please. All opposed? That's definitely two-thirds. And it's two-thirds in the other room as well. So discussion is terminated. We'll now move directly to the vote on the first motion in article three. All in favor of the first motion in article three, please say "aye." All opposed? The motion passes by a majority. It is not unanimous. The second motion under article three is a request for the town to appropriate a million dollars to purchase and install rooftop air conditioning and ventilation units at the Blanchard Middle School and that the town be authorized to borrow and issue bonds therefore. Is there a second to the motion? All right. I know there was somebody who had a question about this. Oh, she just got back to her seat. You can speak from right there, yeah.
Can you hear me? Yeah. I was wondering how many...
Can you give us your name and address, please?
Oh, yeah, it's Cynthia King, 82 Depot Street. So a million dollars is a lot of money, and I know the job needs to be done, but I'm wondering how many bids we got and how much follow-up so that we don't run into another problem, that it wasn't done right, the roof. You know, who's gonna do it? Where'd you get the bid? What kind of insurance do we have that the job will be done right? And what's the warranty on it?
Thank you for the question. Jeff?
So at this point, the intention of this project is to dovetail this together with the Blanchard Roof Replacement Project. The job has currently not been out to bid. It's gonna be going out to bid in December. The number that we're using here of a million dollars is $902,000 worth of estimated construction cost plus 10% contingency. And when we go out to bid in December, at that point, it'll be married together with the roof project as a bid alternate. So at that point, we'll hopefully have three or multiple bids to choose from at that time.
All right, any other questions?
Denali Delmar, Dunstable Road again. Does this school have solar panels? And if not, why not?
The school currently does not have solar panels. As part of the roof replacement project through the MSBA, the building is being made solar-ready. And the town currently has an MOU with Amaresco for the design of the structural component of the photovoltaic system that we're gonna put on the roof once the roof is completed.
Any other questions or comments on this motion? This requires a two-thirds vote. I'm gonna ask you to use your voter cards. All in... All in favor of the second motion under Article III, please raise your cards. Put them down, please. All opposed, please raise your cards. Put them down, please. The motion passes by two-thirds. It is not unanimous.
Madam Moderator?
Yep.
Right here, right here. You're not looking, okay. Cathy Lynch, Rush Road. Why are we not using the clicker for these?
Frankly, I'm trying to do whatever's working fastest, but if folks are concerned about the count, we can use the clickers in this room.
What the clicker is supposed to be doing is provide anonymity, and when there's a very big discrepancy, people are embarrassed or whatever to say their true vote. So, what I'm asking is if we can keep the anonymity with all the questions.
So, you're asking to use the clickers for all questions? Okay, I just want to get it clear. Okay. All right. There's nothing on the floor right now, right? There's no motion on the floor right now. I don't know why everybody's standing up. Here's what we're going to do about the procedure. If it seems like-- I apologize for the last article, which some people felt was controversial. Probably should have used the clickers for that. I'm still going to use my judgment. If I feel that an article is not controversial, for example, the next article where we have a motion to dismiss the article, I don't think it makes sense to have everybody sit here for an extra 10 minutes and use our clickers for that because they are apparently working very slowly tonight. However, we do have other articles coming up that are clearly not going to be as clear-cut, that may be controversial, and on those, we will use the clickers. All right? So, that's the process. Do you have-- no, please. Do you have a point of order?
I have a question about this decision. Can I ask that now?
About my decision? No.
Okay.
Honestly, I'm a dictator here. Okay, all right, all right, all right. Sir?
So, we have a whole room in the other room that if we're concerned about anonymity, whatever the word is, okay? And I'm not personally, but if we're concerned about that, when you get to controversial issues, how are you going to handle the other room?
So, here-- Okay, sir. Yes, I understand that. So, here's the way it works. If we go to take a vote and 20 voters stand up and say they want a secret ballot, then you are entitled, under the terms of our bylaws, to have a secret ballot in both rooms. If 20 voters do not stand up, then it's up to the discretion of the moderator. Okay? Yes?
Yes, my name is Catherine Steele Danton, 236 Concord Road. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I have two-- sorry, I'm out of breath because I ran from the other room. I have two procedural questions. One is, I believe it's two-thirds total, not two-thirds per room, and so we're doing it by two-thirds per room, which is concerning to me.
So, it's so interesting to me because I had to ask my son, who's an engineer, this question. And if it's two-thirds in this room and two-thirds in the other room, it's two-thirds total.
But, yes, if you're counting out of the total correctly, but when you're just holding up a card and someone's looking and saying, "Oh, that looks like two-thirds," when there's 300 people, I counted cards on the last vote and it wasn't exactly accurate.
Well, if you're saying the vote's not accurate, that's one thing, but if it's two-thirds in this room and two-thirds in the other room, it's two-thirds total.
So, the procedure, if we're concerned about accuracy, would be?
For you to stand up and contest the vote.
Okay. So, the second thing on that same--
Can you hold on one moment? One moment. So, on the accuracy question, if seven voters stand up and challenge the decision of the moderator with regard to the accuracy of the count, then it has to be redone.
Okay, thank you for that procedural question, which kind of leads into the second procedural question, which is kind of more of a comment, which is, my understanding was the purpose of the clickers were not anonymity based on the background of why town meetings are town meetings in this state, but rather about accuracy of count.
The purpose of the clickers is multifold. It's to save time, which unfortunately, it doesn't seem that they were doing tonight, as you know from the first vote we had. Also, some people were more comfortable with the anonymity of the clickers, and also just to be accurate. You're right, to have accuracy of voting. There's no question when you have the clicker vote about accuracy. But, at the same time, just like everything else, it's kind of a balancing act. I don't want the whole room to spend 10 minutes taking a clicker vote on whether or not we should dismiss Article IV. To me, that seems like a waste of everyone's time.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Okay. Are we ready to move on? Under Article-- under Article IV, I have a motion to dismiss this article. Is there a second? Are there any questions or concerns about dismissing Article IV? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a voice vote on this article. All in favor of dismissing Article IV, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. It's unanimous in the other room. It is not unanimous in this room. The motion passes. It is not unanimous. So, the article is dismissed. Article V was disposed of in the consent agenda under Article VI. I have a motion that the town act on the recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee and appropriate $1,450,000 from community preservation funds for the Drew Farmhouse, Inc. Preservation and Workforce Housing Project. Is there a second to Article VI? Can we have the recommendation from the Community Preservation Committee as required by law?
Hello? Hello? Tootie Healy, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. We had one project come before us, which is in your booklet, which is the Drew Farm Preservation and Workforce Housing Project. We voted unanimously to support this because it addresses both our housing issues and historic preservation of the old Drew Farm, which is right when you come off 495. So, and it's kind of gotten a little foul. And it has a lot of support from Affording Housing, Historic Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, and League of Women Voters, and Habitat for Humanity is also going to participate. So, we voted unanimously and think it's a very strong proposal.
Okay, let's try and not waste time. So, we have a presentation from the proponent of the article, Ellen Hardy.
Thank you, Madam Editor. I'm Ellen Hardy from 39 Main Street, and I am the President of the Drew Farmhouse, Incorporated. My husband, Mike, and I made the decision to create the Drew Farmhouse, Inc. as a Massachusetts nonprofit, and to invest our time and our money into this project to repurpose the empty Caldwell Banker Building at 70 Boston Road into apartments because it achieves two goals that we care a lot about. Number one, the preservation of the town's 19th-century buildings. And two, the creation of places to live in Westford for people who are part of the fabric of this town but cannot afford to live here. Tonight, the Drew Farmhouse, Inc. comes to town meeting to ask the town to be our financial partner in this 2.5 million purchase and renovation, a public-private partnership. We come to town meeting because we know that over and over again, this town has adopted policies with the same two goals we value, preservation of historic buildings and creation of affordable housing. Working toward our affordable housing goal as a town, we've had an Affordable Housing Committee for over 25 years. And last fall, both that committee and our select board adopted the Town of Westford Housing Production Plan for 2022-2026, which has 13 stated housing goals. This is the housing goal and that plan that the Drew Farmhouse, Inc. is committed to, quote, "Housing for workforce. Create and preserve diverse housing units for households at 80% to 120% of the area median income," unquote. That figure is set by HUD. At the request of the Westford Affordable Housing Committee, we agreed that the renters of the Drew Farmhouse would be households earning no more than 80% to 100% of the area median income. As a town, we've also worked hard on our historic preservation goal. In 1965, Westford did inventory of all the historic buildings of the town. We have five national historic districts. And in 1988, this town meeting created the demolition delay bylaw, so buildings more than 85 years old cannot be demolished without the owner looking at other options. The town has money in hand to reach both the historic preservation and the affordable housing goal that the Drew Farmhouse project will meet. In 2001, as voters, we agreed to a 3% surcharge on our property taxes, a tax permitted by state law known as the Community Preservation Act. 40% of what you and I pay in that fee is matched by the state, and all the CPA money is set aside in a separate fund to be available for appropriation by town meeting when an opportunity presents itself. Tonight's appropriation request for the Drew Farmhouse is that opportunity. Can the Drew Farmhouse, Inc. make this work from every angle? Can we manage it? Can we make it financially viable? Here is our track record. Mike and I bought an 1876 house and barn at 39 Main Street that had been a nursing home for 48 years and had been empty for three and a half years. A year later, we had returned it to a family home as Eleanor and Alan Cameron built it. We think that came out okay. We know that we can do the same with this 1865 farmhouse and the barn that was a real estate office for over 30 years and has been sitting empty for almost two years. And in the affordable area, housing area, seven years ago, we bought the former Wright and Fletcher store at 40 Main Street that was built in 1837. There's still a store on the first floor. Some of you may be customers. And there are also five apartments in that building. The previous owner kept the rents low, and so have we, taking in enough rental income to pay the mortgage, setting aside a kitty for rapid capital repairs, but taking nothing out of that investment for ourselves. That's the Hardy track record. But since last February, much more has been done to make the project happen, and not just by Mike and me. Here is what the posse of volunteers, who care ever so strongly about the Drew Farmhouse proposal, have accomplished in just eight months. Number one, we have received all the permits and variances needed from the town for five apartments in the farmhouse and up to two units of the barn, and have gotten unanimous support from seven town boards and committees, planning, Board of Appeals, conservation, affordable housing, historical commission, community preservation and finance. And the select board voted four to zero to support this motion with one member absent. Number two, we incorporated the Drew Farmhouse, Inc. with the state. Number three, the nonprofit signed a purchase and sale agreement for $1.1 million with Anywhere Real Estate of Madison, New Jersey, the current owners of the property, and that agreement is contingent upon the town voting to partner with us tonight at this meeting. We've secured preliminary approval from Enterprise Bank and Trust for a mortgage. We've raised $163,000 in pledges from you and residents who believe in us, and we will receive $2,500 donations from two financial institutions in town, and that's just so far. Number four, Steve Goethier, a Westford contractor who we worked with before, is on board to oversee the renovation. As much as possible, all our subcontractors will have Westford connections, so Westford taxpayers' money stays in Westford. We have architectural plans for five cubicles and the five-- for five apartments in the farmhouse space, which now looks like this, 40 real estate Asian cubicles. And Habitat for Humanity of Greater Lowell will create three bedrooms, a three-bedroom family home in the first floor of the barn, which is on the right-hand side of the building. This is now the reception building for the real estate office, but you can see some of the barn features that have been left. This is at no cost to the town or to the Drew Farmhouse, Inc. This will be Habitat's project. And seven, we agreed to the town conservation planner's request for four parking spaces, as you can see, in the parking spaces on the Boston Sode, right of Boston roadside of our property. This will be a place for the public to park and to walk to the Abiding Peace Trail, which you can see on the left-hand side of the property and where the town conservation land sits behind the barn. Eight, at the request of the town sustainability coordinator, we will install two public electric vehicle charging stations, and with help from the coordinator, we've hired a team to evaluate the farmhouse for energy efficiencies, and we can incorporate these into the renovation. Westford Climate Action volunteers have offered to help us evaluate those recommendations. Number nine, after months of negotiation, we got the long mode. And number 10, having tonight's town meeting agree that this is a win-win partnership for this town, for the future residents of the farmhouse and the barn, and for an historic building at the gateway to Westford by voting yes on the motion under Article VI. I thank you.
All right. Questions or comments? Got the microphone to my left.
Vicki Geary, 51 Carlisle Road. I'd like to read a statement from the League of Women Voters of Westford. The League of Women Voters of Westford strongly supports the appropriation of CPA-- The League of Women Voters of Westford strongly supports the appropriation of CPA funds of $1,450,000 for the Drew Farmhouse Affordable Housing Project. The proposed project aims to fill a gap in the housing options in Westford, where, as we all know, there is a severe shortage of housing for low and median-income residents. The League has long advocated for affordable housing at the local, state, and national levels. The Westford League believes that all people have the right to safe, decent, and adequate housing. We support a variety of housing types which maintain the quality of neighborhoods and promote economic and social diversity within the community while preserving contiguous open space, environmental resource protection, and efficient use of land. Based on this position, the Westford League supports the proposal to redevelop the Drew Farmhouse at 70 Boston Road, and we urge you to vote yes on Article Six to make this much-needed project a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. At the center microphone, please.
Diane Hendricks, Crown Road. I just have a question. The barn that Habitat for Humanity is going to develop, was the barn sold to them, or how is that transfer of ownership going to happen?
We will condominiumize the property, Diane, so that the Drew Farmhouse will be the condominium that will be the five apartments. And then the second condo part of that association will be Habitat for Humanity.
Are they paying for the?
Not in dollars, but they have offered us generously in-kind help. For example, when we're needing painting, and they have painters who are volunteers, they will help us in the farmhouse to create the five apartments that we are doing. So at the moment, there will be no cash transaction between Habitat and the Drew Farmhouse, Incorporated, but we will certainly have a close relationship with them.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
The microphone to my right.
So I'm not sure how the lottery works for, you know, senior housing and things of that sort, but how are people going to be chosen to live there? Who does that? And just how's it going to work? I mean, is there, is it going to go through the same system as usually it happens in the town? Or no?
It will be, the decision will be made by the Board of Directors of the nonprofit, of the Drew Farmhouse, Inc. We work very closely with the Affordable Housing Committee. As a matter of fact, we suggested that one of their members serve on our Board of Directors. We've been advised by town council that that can't happen, Arnie. But the requirements in terms of the income limitations, as I showed you on the slide, that's all established by HUD. People's incomes must fall between that 80% and 100%, but it will be our Board of Directors that will make that decision from the people who submit their interest in being in one of the five apartments.
Is that Board of Directors already in place?
That is Board of Directors. In order to be common nonprofit with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you need to have a Board of Directors and bylaws, and we did that the first week in August. That was all accepted by the Commonwealth.
May I ask who's on it?
Yes, I'm the president. Sharice Latimore, who is actually a Chelmsford resident and serves on the Greater Lowell Charitable Foundation Board, is our clerk. And Cheryl Major, who lives on Acton Road in Westford, is our third member of the board.
A three-member board?
At the moment, it's a three-member board.
Do you have plans to increase that?
I think we're going to see what the job load is. To be honest, we were reticent to ask people. At this point, we need to get the five apartments built. And so these were the three people who said they'd help us through the fundraising portion of it and the construction stage. When we get to that happy moment that we actually have the five apartments for people to live in, I think we will definitely consider that. And I would say that anyone who is interested in serving on the board, please let one of us know because, you know, many hands make a light work.
So, I agree. So evidently, you don't have to be a Westford resident.
Arnie, you're slipping in a bunch of questions.
You have my number, Arnie. I'd be glad to talk to you about it. Great line. But that's the process that we will be using.
Ellen, can we let Kristen address the meeting? It's our town manager, Kristen Last.
Good evening, Kristen Last, town manager. Just wanted to clarify a few things that Ellen had stated. There will be a regulatory agreement in place between the Drew Farmhouse, Inc., and the select board. And in that regulatory agreement, it will speak to how the lottery will operate, who will be doing the lottery, and who will be eligible for the housing. So this evening, the town meeting is being asked to appropriate the funds. Then, if that passes this evening, the select board will have several decisions to make in the near future related to a CPC grant agreement, a regulatory agreement for the affordable housing, and a historic preservation agreement for the historical component.
Thank you. Have the microphone to my left.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and good evening, everyone. I am Joni Krodo, 10 Botwell Hill Road, and I am the chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. The Affordable Housing Trust, as Ellen has said, unanimously voted to support the Hardies' project at 70 Boston Road. It will reach a population that both the Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Production Plan have recognized as a forgotten population in Westford: those who are above the affordable housing income limits but cannot afford the rents in Westford. It is those families that are between 80% and 120% of the area median income. At our request, the Hardies have met the Affordable Housing Trust's request of targeting not more than 100% of area median income. And they are also including a perpetual deed restriction so that those units at 70 Boston Road will always service this forgotten population. We thank the Hardies for taking on this wonderful project and ask everyone to please support this badly needed housing. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a question from the other room. I'm going to relay it to you because the voter wants to speak the question, so I just want to make sure everybody in here hears it.
Hello, my name is Brian Funken, 57 Lake Shore Drive North. I would like to call attention to the agreement that we all agreed to at the beginning of this, that we would limit our comments to two minutes. Also, I would like to push forth a motion to vote.
Okay. On the first part, the two minutes is limited to speakers at the microphone, not presenters, who are limited to six minutes. But was your second part of your question a motion, to move the question?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. We have a motion to move the question, meaning to terminate debate. In order to do that, we need a two-thirds vote in each room. Let's use our clickers for this. I'll let you know when the voting is open. And what we're voting on, yes, will be to terminate debate; no, will be to continue debating this issue. I'll let you know when we're, voting is open. If you want to terminate debate, you should be pressing the green 1A button. If you want to continue discussing this, press the red 2B button. Voting is closed. Everyone in this room should have voted. They're still counting in the PAC. Thank you for your patience. We are making it through the warrant. We're not that far from the end, although we may have another article that warrants discussion, significant discussion. It's possible. So it turns out it's not as much fun to use the walkie-talkies as I thought. Really like to just throw it away. The motion to terminate debate passes by a two-thirds majority. And I'm going to tell you the numbers in one second. And the numbers are 813 yes, 206 no. All right, so debate has been terminated, and that means we move to the vote on this question. This question requires a majority, a simple majority, to pass. We're going to vote with our clickers again. If you want to vote in favor of Article Six to appropriate $1,450,000 from community preservation funds for the Drew Farmhouse, Inc. Preservation and Workforce Housing Project, you'll press your 1A button or vote yes. If you want to vote against, you'll press your 2B button to vote no. Everybody ready? Okay, voting is open. So for those folks who are here for the first time, I'd just like to say that this is not the way the meeting is usually run. It's true. It's usually much more efficient. It runs much more smoothly. We have over 1,000 people here tonight. That's great. I've been wanting to increase the number of voters to 1,000, but I'll admit, we were not quite prepared for this many people. Next time, we will be. So I hope that people won't get discouraged because of the way the meeting's proceeding and not come back. I hope all the voters who are here today. I hope all the voters who are here tonight will come again so that we can continue to have a thousand people and be better prepared for it in the future. The town clerk wants to ask me if you liked the pole pads. This is the first time we used those when you were coming in and you checked in. Okay. That's an improvement. We're always improving. It'll be easy to improve from this one. Voting is closed. The motion passes by a majority. The numbers are...
Eight thirty-three yes.
Eight hundred thirty-three yes.
Four hundred and six no.
And four hundred and six no. Under Article Seven, I have a motion that the town authorize the Select Board to pursue an amendment of the existing means-tested senior citizen tax exemption by removing the three-year limitation and making other editorial changes as shown in the warrant. Is there a second to that motion? Christine Collins is going to give us some of the details of this article. Christine is a tax collector. But we love her anyway.
So town meeting authorized a senior means-tested exemption a number of years ago. It went to the legislature to be approved and back to the ballot to be approved at the ballot. That legislation included a sunset clause after three years. We're in the second year in twenty-three. We're in the third year now. So we have to have it re-voted without the sunset clause. The purpose of the sunset clause was to force a review of the program because of when we enacted it, we really did not know how many participants were going to be able to be benefited by it or how much it was actually going to cost. So by having this sort of review of the program, we wanted to make sure it was operating as intended. There's only a couple of edits on it. A couple of them are just sort of wording edits to make it say more clearly what we intended, to remove the three-year sunset clause, to take our housing limitation, the house value limitation in the original legislation, said eighty percent of average single-family residents. We would like it to be a hundred percent of the single, average, single-family residents instead because the program is only benefiting a small number of people. We really thought it would help more. The other minor change is that there was a limitation for another housing limitation that was connected to the circuit breaker, which was much higher. So it doesn't seem necessary to keep that. Are there any questions, Madam Moderator?
Any questions or comments on this article? Okay, seeing none, we'll take the vote. Is there any objection to having a voice vote on this? I'm just getting a feel for the room. Anybody have an objection to taking a voice vote? Alright, this vote requires a simple majority. All in favor of Articles, of the motion under Article Seven, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. The motion passes. It is not unanimous in either room. Alright, having disposed of Article Eight in the consent agenda, we're now at Article Nine. Article Nine is an amendment to our zoning bylaw proposed jointly by the Planning Board and Select Board, which would define and regulate firearm businesses in Westford and list criteria for establishing firearm businesses in town to address public safety concerns. Is there a second to this motion? Jeff Morissette, our Director of Land Use Management, will explain the history and details of the proposal.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, Jeff Morissette, Director of Land Use Management. So this began in early January when an application was received to relocate an existing firearm business to Westford from a neighboring community. Shortly thereafter, our police department requested that options be explored for examining greater control over the review and sighting of future firearm businesses in Westford. After much public comment and multiple public meetings, the Planning Board and Select Board agreed to jointly sponsor a zoning bylaw amendment. A vigorous public hearing resulted in Article Nine that is before you for tonight's consideration. Article Nine proposes to amend our zoning bylaw to define and regulate firearm businesses separately from other uses. If approved, the following types of uses would be considered a firearm business: the purchase or sale of firearms, ammunition, or firearm accessories. This is also defined as a firearm dealer. The operation of a firing range or the performing of gunsmithing services. This bylaw would limit new firearm businesses to the Commercial Highway and Industrial Highway zoning districts, which are generally located along Littleton Road, Liberty Way, and portions of Powers Road. It would require a special permit for sighting new firearm businesses, and it would designate the Planning Board as the special permit granting authority. It would actively involve the police department as part of the planning board review process and require applicants to submit site-specific security plans for review and approval by the police department. It would require buffers between firearm businesses and certain types of established uses. Specifically, a thousand-foot buffer to schools, five-hundred-foot buffers to childcare centers, religious uses, and locations where children commonly congregate to participate in scheduled and structured activities. And lastly, there'd be a five-hundred-foot separation between firearm businesses. This bylaw would limit the total number of special permits the Planning Board could grant for firearm dealers to two and a general limitation of four special permits for firearm businesses of any type. When considering these limits, one business providing multiple elements of service would count as one special permit. However, two or more distinct businesses operating at the same location would each count separately towards the applicable limitation. The two existing sportsmen's clubs with firing ranges in town would be grandfathered. It would not be negatively affected by this amendment, and they would not count towards the limitation on the number of firearm businesses. So due to constitutional protections and evolving case law, it is important that proposed regulations not be overly restrictive. The proposed limitations on the number of special permits were based on an evaluation of current licensing information from the state. When comparing the average number of licenses per community and Westford's per capita share, the Planning Board found that the suggested limit of two for firearm dealers and an overall limit of four for firearm businesses would not be unduly restrictive. Furthermore, there are safeguards in place such that the Planning Board can waive or reduce setback requirements and waive either or both on the limitations on the number of businesses if it could result in an unintended prohibition of any element of a firearm business. Much more detailed information is provided in the Planning Board's written report and recommendation, which begins on page eleven of the Green Handout. Next, Planning Board Chair Michael Bonifant will provide a report on behalf of the Planning Board. Thank you.
The Planning Board's report is required by law. Mike Bonifant, Chair of the Planning Board.
Good evening, Michael Bonifant, Chair of the Planning Board. I'm here to give the Planning Board a report and recommendations for the article. The Planning Board opened the public hearing at its June fifth meeting. Discussion continued at a July seventeenth meeting. At our August twenty-first meeting, we welcomed the Select Board and the Board of Health for further discussion with the public. And finally, we held a joint meeting with the Select Board on September eighteenth, where the Planning Board closed the public hearing. Throughout the process, there were various versions of this proposed amendment, taken into consideration public comment, attempting to strike a balance between the different interests, all while seeking the advice of town council. After the public hearing discussion, the Planning Board has found the following. The current bylaw allows firearm businesses as a matter of right in more zoning districts than would be allowed in the proposed zoning bylaw amendment. Currently, there are no limits on the amount of the number of firearm businesses. There are no buffers between potential firearm businesses or schools, and currently, there is no requirement to involve the police department in any part of the permitting process. The Planning Board found that the proposed amendment is not to the detriment of the town or its residents. In fact, the Board believes the proposed amendment serves the public interest as it creates an additional level of discretionary review to ensure the public health and safety are being maintained. The proposed bylaw would limit firearm businesses to a particular area, which is easily oversee... which provides easier oversight by the Western Police Department and keeps them generally separated from single-family houses. Through the assistance of town council, the Board found that the regulation of firearm businesses cannot be unduly restrictive. We found that the average number of licenses to sell firearms per Massachusetts community was one point two eight as of July first, two thousand twenty-three. After taking into consideration public comment, the Board found the issuance of two new firearm dealers to be an appropriate number, with the safeguards as previously discussed to allow additional special permits if there is a need not to be satisfied... special permits if there is a need not satisfied by the total number of four special permits. The Board found that the special permit requirement, as opposed to a site plan review, was appropriate as it grants the Board more discretion and allows the police department to become involved in the permitting process. Planning Board voted, Board of One, to recommend this amendment at town meeting. Please welcome Tom Clay, Chair of the Select Board.
Chair of the Select Board, the co-proposer of this article.
Yes, as co-sponsors, the Select Board unanimously recommends this bylaw change, and we commend our partners in the Planning Board for conducting an inclusive and open public hearing process, listening to community input, and seeking the greatest degree of consensus on this complex issue. From the time the chief chambers first made a request that we consider additional controls over the sighting of firearms-related businesses until today, we have collectively held ten public meetings discussing this topic and had a public hearing that spanned four Planning Board sessions. Again, the Select Board strongly recommends this zoning bylaw change.
Alright, before we begin discussion, I'd like to acknowledge that this is an emotional issue for many people and remind you again that it's easier to convince people of your position if it's expressed in a calm and reasonable way. I'd also like to remind everyone to stay on topic, try not to repeat what others have said, and be aware of how long you've been speaking. Be sure to give your name and address and hold up your orange voter card when it's your turn to speak. And just so everyone knows, this motion will require a two-thirds majority to pass. The microphone... Sorry?
Question. I would like to move that this vote be taken by clickers in this room and by secret paper ballot in the other room, and I invite twenty other people in this room to stand with me on that.
It's not necessary. We're going to do exactly that.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Since we have clickers here in this room, it's only fair that a secret ballot be allowed in the other room. The microphone to my left.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Dennis Galvin. I live at ninety Conker Road, and I'm going to speak in opposition to this particular article. One reason is, first of all, I believe it's unnecessary. Under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter one forty, one twenty-three B, and one twenty-three, the Chief of Police has the authority to license, to inspect, and to specify the conditions under which all firearms businesses are to be conducted. There has been an allegation that there's not enough regulation. There is sound regulation. Most importantly, these regulations have been constitutionally tested. When we start going out beyond that and try to craft our own, there's a good possibility we're going to wind up being challenged. But the real issue, I think, with this issue is simply this. I think the Board overstepped it when they went beyond the site plan review. This calls for a special permit. A special permit is the authority to ban a use. That's what gives it its leverage, okay? So what happens here is, this authority has now been given to the Planning Board, which is an elected body. It's also subject to political pressure. Generally, that authority is given to the Z B A, where there's less pressure on it. Now, the big issue here is that the use involved is a constitutional right. So the concern is, this constitutional right has been given to a political board, alright, that is subject to political pressure. The probability of this board being, rendering a capricious and arbitrary position is very high. And as a result of that, the town will find itself in federal court and possibly be subject to punitive damages. Finally, the last thing is that the bylaw purports to increase gun safety and reduce gun violence. This bylaw will not affect that at all, alright? The Westford residents have had firearms as part of their culture since the revolution. When I got here forty-five years ago, everybody had a rifle and a shotgun. The homicide rate here in Massachusetts is the lowest in the nation. There are better places where you can put your...
I'm in charge of saying that, so please, nobody try to cut another voter off from the audience, please. I will ask you to wrap up.
I'm done. So to conclude, I'm simply going to say that people could put their efforts in a better area if they want to reduce gun violence and increase gun safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. At the center microphone, please. You can actually show your support with your vote, and it will take a lot less time. At the center microphone, please.
Yes, thank you. Bill Bilot, Fifty-two Nutting Road. In regards to setbacks, what would happen if a business that caters to, and I'm using your language or their language, or where children congregate want to move within five hundred feet of a firearms business?
Jeff, do you want to answer that?
Thank you. So I believe the question is, if there is an established firearm business and a business moves in where children commonly congregate comes in within that buffer zone, does that affect the firearm business? No, it does not. If the firearm business is established legitimately and another business that would normally create a buffer comes in within that buffer, it does not, it's not to the detriment of the firearm business. They came in correctly, and so they get to continue as they have.
Would the other business be allowed to go there, though?
This bylaw would limit firearm businesses going in where there are established uses with...
I think the question he asked was, would like that school or daycare center be allowed?
No, he would answer it, yeah.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Al Prescott, Lake Shore Drive North. The lawful firearms owners of Westford are opposed to this article. Let's talk a little bit about safety. I served on the town's safety task force. You know how many times the discussion about firearms businesses came up with regards to public safety? Zero. Zero, because it's not even in the top ten. It's probably not in the top one hundred. And if anybody here is convinced about safety, I ask anybody here who's walked through Littleton Common recently, when was the last time you were raped, robbed, or shot at when hundreds of FFLs, if you believe what everyone else is saying, were less than a hundred feet away? away? The answer is none. Zero. The police chief, in fact, does have, under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 140, Section 122, I believe, he has sole discretion in issuing licenses to firearms businesses. And lastly, everybody, think about this for just one second. The budget task force has reported to the Select Board that this town is going to be eight to ten million dollars in the hole very, very soon. That's two thousand dollars per household, above and beyond what you're paying for taxes right now, and the inventory of your average firearm store could be anywhere from half to 1.5 million dollars. That's something that we should really want to be taxing if we could. They don't put any children through the school system. Madam Moderator, we have more vacancies on Route 110 than any other town in the region. That's crazy. But, that's okay. The budget task force says in the presentation, and people here can read it, that we can always raise taxes or entice cannabis businesses into town. That said, the single biggest danger to us, properly funding our schools in the future and properly funding public safety, the police and fire, is this proposal. Vote no on nine. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. The microphone to my left.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Kristy Bates, 23 Pierce Ave. I support Article Nine and ask the town to vote yes. There are eight other communities in Massachusetts that have firearm business zoning bylaws. Our neighboring towns Littleton and Acton recently passed these bylaws, and like Westford, they are concerned about having multiple firearm dealers in one location, like the almost eighty firearm dealers soon to be displaced from the Old Mill in the center of Littleton. You can read about them in the Boston Globe article that was reported today. Other communities like Sudbury and Stowe are drafting bylaws now. We are not alone, and we are not first. It's important to remember that if we do not pass this bylaw and these other communities have bylaws in place, then Westford becomes an even more attractive location for a gun emporium similar to Littleton. Please vote yes.
The microphone in the center, please.
Sorry, Rosenberg, Grotten Road. The planning board has heard from maybe seventy people over three public feedback meetings, and God knows how many people over the past eight months via calls, letters, and personal meetings. Our police chief, Elk Ford, and town lawyer all contributed ideas for the current proposal. Our Select Board cosponsored it. I did a survey with eighty-four respondents, and ninety percent of the respondents favor both major legs of this proposal. The proposal is not perfect, but I feel it is a reasonable compromise between those who want no firearm businesses, those who want some restrictions, and those who want no restrictions. Our lawyer feels that is defensible if legally challenged. I think our lawyer is in a better position than our citizens to make that call. Listening to all your constituents is the backbone of democracy. Our boards have succeeded. Let's pass this bylaw as a writ.
The microphone to my right, please.
Andy Malio, 23 Pierce Ave. I have a question for the Westford police, and do the Westford police support this bylaw?
Chief Mark Chambers.
The bylaw includes all the things that I had gone to, both the land use management, planning board and everything, and the Select Board in it, so it addresses all of my concerns.
At the microphone to my left.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Vicki Geary, 51 Carlisle Road, reading a statement from the League of Women Voters of Westford. The League of Women Voters of Massachusetts, along with the League of Women Voters of the United States, hold a longstanding position on the private possession of firearms. Since 1974, the Massachusetts League has supported strict enforcement of present laws concerning handgun ownerships and has advocated for measured and responsible access to firearms, including mandated safety courses and improved standard-sized licensing procedures. It is because of this position that the Westford League supports Article Nine as a reasonable regulation of access to firearms. Public safety is enhanced by creating buffer zones to schools, childcare centers, and other locations where children commonly congregate. Article Nine also requires firearms businesses to have a safety plan approved by the Westford Police Department. These details provide a reasonable and responsible guardrails on any firearm business operating within our community. Based on almost fifty years of League advocacy on this and other social justice issues, the League of Women Voters encourages you to vote yes on Article Nine. Thank you.
At the microphone to my right.
Hi. Jodi Marshan, Six River Street. Well, first of all, may I say, purple is my favorite because it's the -- it's representing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Secondly, I have a necklace on, and this was given to me in memory of my seventeen-year-old child that was shot and murdered by her father February 1st, 2010. I was also shot in the head. My jaw was shattered, and now I have a bullet in my right shoulder. The point being, my husband was a hunter. He belonged to the sportsman's club. I have no problem with that. That's -- it's part of life. What I am opposed to is having gun shops in our town, the town of Westford that's known for the school system. It's known for Timbles Ice Cream, and now it's going to be known for gun shops. I cannot believe that we would allow our town to be represented by gun shops, that murdered kids, they go to schools. It is not okay. And I say vote yes for number two. I mean, push your line.
All right, I believe I have a question from the other room, if you can give me a moment. Let's take the microphone to my left while we --
Madam Moderator. Jackie Kuntz, 5 Tadmuck Road. I'm voting yes for these bylaw changes because I am very concerned about how gun violence affects children. As a mother of two young women and a teacher of young children for many years, I am concerned because I know that gun violence is the leading cause of fatalities of people under eighteen. We have witnessed an entire generation growing up in the shadow of daily gun violence. That in itself is a tragedy. Having attended many of the meetings, I know that this bylaw represents a common sense approach to limit sales of firearms within the borders of our town in light of valid concerns around safety. This is a compromise between those that wanted zero gun retail and those that wanted limits, zero limits. As a parent and educator, I am voting yes on this article to keep our children safe, and I urge you to do so as well. Thank you.
Okay, we have a question from the other room, and the voters can speak to the microphone. So go ahead.
Hello, this is Sean Amato from ADH Inland Road. When I saw this article come up, I asked a question. So I went online and found this wonderful organization called Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, and they have studies. They have studies, pardon my language, coming out the wazoo. And I saw one that totally blew me away. Most of the gun crime is done with stolen guns. Of all the stolen guns that most of the gun crime is done with, ninety-five percent comes from residents' homes. They go into a house and steal a gun or a bunch of guns. Only five percent of the guns used in crimes come from dealers. So we're kind of letting our hearts lead us in a bad direction. There's no evidence, no information that says having a gun shop in your town will increase the likelihood of gun deaths or crime. And people say a lot of stuff, and the reality is, there's a lot of information that basically says the opposite of what you're saying. The largest mass murder location is a business where people work. Schools, it's a bad thing. Down to number three, I was like fifteen. We're looking in the wrong direction to solve problems, and this is the right, the Second Amendment that will slowly get whittled away, and one day you'll wish you didn't let it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. At the center microphone, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Marjorie McHuman, 4 Morrison Lane. I'm an Air Force/Security Forces veteran, served in Operation Iraq Free, and my husband is still serving in the Air Force. I don't speak for everyone here, of course, just myself. I have two children who attend Westford schools, one going to Westford Academy High School and the other at Rita Miller Elementary. Our oldest graduated last year from WA. We moved to Westford because it boasts a safe community and top schools in Massachusetts, and it was only twenty minutes from my husband's work. Back in February 6, 2023, the Westford Planning Board met to consider proposed firearms retail shop in Westford, which made me worry how many could be allowed in Westford after what happened in Littleton. I felt safe with zero gun shops in town, but not safe if it turned out like Littleton. I thought, if my kids, the Alisters in schools, and the rates of gun violence. I'm part of and help form the group called Safe Sensible Zoning Westford, all whom are citizens of Westford, and we are worried about the amount of firearms businesses that could set up in our small town of 24,000 citizens. This has been a long process since February, lots of meetings, trying to push a compromise of the number of special permits allowed. I know I prefer zero firearms business versus any at all, but it seems that four special permits is a complete compromise, and we don't vote tonight. To pass this article, we will have to wait two more years to vote again, and by then, who knows how many firearms businesses will be able to apply in Westford. I'm absolutely not anti-gun. I've shot many weapons, and this is not an attack on anyone's two-way rights as we are going from zero gun shops to four special permits. This vote is simply just trying to make it safer community with sensible zoning and will help provide our small town with a permit limit for Westford. Please vote yes to this bylaw.
At the microphone to my right, please.
Kathy Lynch, Rush Road. We have heard from two people, Mr. Prescott and Mr. Galvin, about the law that indicates that Chief Chambers, our police chief, has the authority he needs already. He does not need a special permit to make this a safe town. The numbers were cited, and you can refer to that law. And I think the people in this town have heard plenty about this through the media, whether it's social or print. I think we learned enough about this, and I'd like to move the question.
Okay, we have a motion to move the question that isn't debatable, and we need to take a vote on that first. The motion to move the question takes a two-thirds -- Kathy, town council informs me that you can't make a statement and move the question at the same time. Okay, so those folks who were up, please get up again and stand where you were standing. Chief, did you want to respond? Yes.
So there has been several statements saying that the police chief has the power to deny these permits. I do not. I do not have the power to deny a license unless there is a statutory indication as to why I cannot. So I just, if any person comes in and applies for a license, if they are an FFL and they follow all the rules and they pass a background check and everything else that I do, I shall issue that permit. I do not have that discretion. It's different than a firearms LTC.
Who has a point of order? Yep.
The sections that we're referring to refer to the police chief's ability to issue a license, and I would like --
Now, Al, stand back. This is not a point of order. That's not a point of order. If you want to make that statement, you can get back in line, or you can, when I call, you make that statement, but that's not a point of order.
It's a shall issue permit.
The microphone to my left.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I will make no statements. I would like to please move to vote on this item.
Okay, now we have a motion to move the question that will terminate debate. So we are going to vote in here with our clickers, and in the other room, they're going to be having a secret ballot. Is there a second to the motion to move the question? Yes. Okay, just to be sure. Thank you for keeping me honest, whoever said that. All right. Yes? I'm sorry, can't hear you.
Okay. Alan Nakesh-Holzberg, 6 Betty Lane, point of order. The gentleman who just moved the question did not identify himself, I believe. That's a requirement of town meeting?
Yes, you are correct. Is that gentleman still in this room, or did he come from the other room? No, no, come on, that wasn't you. There he is. Okay, sir, can you just come up to the microphone and identify yourself and give us your address? My fault for not asking you.
Two Abbott Mill Lane.
And your name?
Benjamin.
Benjamin, you need your last name.
Matuzzi.
Okay, thank you very much. So we're going to do -- unless the -- unless twenty voters in the other room stand up for the motion to move the question to be a secret ballot, then I'll yield to the discretion of the assistant moderator in there as to how to take the vote. Yes? Who has a point of order? Don't just say it randomly. Do you have one?
Bill Belauta, 52 Nutting. That guy asked that earlier at the very beginning. He asked for a point of order and twenty people to do a secret ballot.
No, no, that's for the vote. We're now voting on whether or not to terminate debate, so that's why I'm just thinking it'll be faster if we don't -- unless people object in the other room where they don't have a secret ballot, in which case, we'll go ahead and have a secret ballot in there as well. Do you have a point of order, Arnie?
I do. Madam Moderator, there's a count going on. Have we started the vote yet?
With the what? Oh, no. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. We're going to start over again. We haven't opened the vote yet officially. All right, so if you want to terminate debate, when I say the vote is open, you'll press your green button. If you don't want to terminate debate, if you want to continue discussing, when the vote is open, you'll press your red button. All right, the voting is open now. You can vote either to terminate debate by saying yes or to keep debating by saying no. And in the PAC, you may also do your voting. And in the PAC, you may also do your voting. Sorry, can you repeat? Any idea how many yeas? Oh, no. I would assume he did the yeas first. Okay, he's texting. Yes? The clerk's bedtime reminder just went off, so we have to move along. It's past her bedtime now. Okay, here it comes. I'm gonna close it, but, oh. No. Voting is closed. Okay, the motion to terminate debate passes by, the number is 959 to 76. All right, so now we're moving right to, uh, the vote on the underlying motion. If you want to vote yes for Article Nine, you'll press your green 1A button. If you want to vote no, you'll press your red 2B button when I tell you the vote is open. They're going to be doing a secret ballot in the PAC, so be patient for the outcome. You ready, Mike? Is, uh, I think we already have a second here. Is there a second? Did we get a second? Yes, yes, we already have a second. Okay, voting is open. If you want to vote yes. Sorry.
Before you opened the voting, there, it was counting. It does not instill confidence in this voting system. You, it was already counting up. So I, I suggest we start over with the zero count.
Yep. Okay, stop voting. Stop voting until I tell you that the voting is open. Vote, wait. Okay. What is your point of order?
I just, could you just clarify for the voters that a yes vote is to enact the zoning, a no vote is to not, just so that we're clear?
I couldn't say it better than that. A yes vote approves the zoning bylaw, enacts the zoning bylaw as it has been- Zero it out again. As it has been presented tonight. A no vote does not enact the bylaw. There will be no bylaw if you vote no. Okay, just, no. Stop voting, please. Stop voting. Now. Okay, we're gonna start now, so no other questions. Voting is open. If you want the bylaw to pass, vote yes. If you do not want the bylaw, vote no. The green 1A button is yes, the red 2B button is no. I would like to remind you that the voting is not over yet. The meeting is not over yet, and if you want to find out how this vote goes, or ensure that it goes a particular way, you should not leave the meeting. If you have a clicker, please return it on your way out. Please do not leave with your clicker. There are boxes at the door you can drop the clickers into, and I'd remind you again that the meeting is not over, and nothing is finally decided until it is. Please do not leave with your clicker, and please do not leave if you want to see what the outcome of the article is, and whether or not this is the article that ends up going forward or not. I've been asked if a motion to reconsider can be made, and a motion to reconsider can be made. Please do not leave if you want to see the outcome of this article. We're closing. We're closing the vote in here.
And?
We have the vote. The motion fails to pass, the vote is 590 yes, 477 no. I've been asked to recognize Mark Chambers, the chief of police.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry to bother you, I know everybody's in a rush to get out of here, but I would like to make a motion to reconsider Article 9.
You can vote with that voice if you wish, but it's not appropriate to make that noise. It's not. Is there a second to the motion to reconsider? Dennis, go to the microphone, please. That's enough. Dennis? Is your microphone on, Dennis? The motion to reconsider does not have to be on new information. It is within the moderator's discretion. I would like to hear the reason for the motion before I make a decision. Sorry? Approach the microphone if you want to speak, and I will recognize you. This is not a bar. All right, chief, you want to give the reasons for your motion?
So I'd like to reconsider Article 9, but I would like to propose a substantially less restrictive version of the bylaw, but will still advance the interests of public safety. For those of you that saw the article in the Boston Globe today, they basically termed it the frame game that was being played over by some of the dealers over in the Littleton Mill building. That was the impetus for the start of my request to propose a bylaw back in February. It's because of that frame game, where some dealers would provide certain parts of the firearm, and other dealers would provide another part of a firearm, and essentially skirt the mass-approved firearm regulations. That was the intent of when I brought the request for the bylaw forward, and that's why I would like to propose a less restrictive version of the bylaw to address the public safety issue that has been demonstrated in neighboring communities.
Right. Dennis, approach the microphone, please. You can come up here, you can come up here.
The motion to reconsider, Madam Moderator, has to apply to the vote that was just-
Dennis, give your name and address, please.
Dennis Galvin, 90 Conker Road. The motion to reconsider applies to the vote that was just taken. The chief is trying to introduce another amendment or another motion, that's out of order.
So the motion, the motion to reconsider, the motion to reconsider would have to be passed first, and then before we could reconsider the main motion, if the chief wanted to make an amendment, it would have to be amended. But the first order of business would be to consider whether or not the meeting wants to reconsider. That's to consider whether or not the meeting wants to reconsider. That's the first thing.
Point of order, please?
Step up to the microphone if you have a point of order.
Point of order. The League of Women Voters Handbook says the motion to reconsider needs to be made by the prevailing side. So how do we know who was prevailing or not if it was a secret vote?
So the, so the town meeting is governed by town meeting time, which suggests that moderators be liberal in accepting motions to reconsider, so that we don't get into an argument about you did or didn't vote in the majority. And we are governed, as much as I love the League's booklet, we're governed by town meeting's time.
How many revotes do you get?
It's within the moderator's discretion.
We've gone through this before with people coming back to-
Okay, that's, Bob, Bob, thank you. Sir, you'll have to approach the microphone, and you'll have to approach it back there where other people are. At the center microphone.
Arnie Price, Oak Hill Road. Madam Moderator, I'd like to move to table the chief's motion to the next town meeting. Chief's motion to reconsider, the people who left on both sides, I would just move through, table the motion.
All right, all right. Hold up a minute. Okay, Arnie, Arnie Price, who just made that motion, we're just checking with town council, you can't interrupt the motion to reconsider with the motion, what you would really be doing is tabling indefinitely. You can't, you can't, excuse me, you can't table something to another meeting, you can only postpone indefinitely, which basically does away with it. But either way, we can't interrupt the motion to reconsider with either of those requests. So we're going to go forward with the motion to reconsider. I would just-
Point of personal information, please. You mean that you can't, it can't be a motion to postpone under parliamentary procedure?
Not while we have a motion for reconsideration on the floor.
Then how can you, if there wasn't, if there wasn't a motion on the floor, there would be nothing to postpone?
No, no. The motion for reconsideration is a subsidiary motion to the main motion. You're right, if we didn't have a main motion on the floor, we couldn't move to postpone indefinitely. But we, what we're doing is a subsidiary motion, which is a motion to reconsider. We cannot do it that way, Arnie.
One thing, could you read back the chief's motion?
I'm sorry?
Read back the chief's motion, please.
The chief's motion, okay.
The motion was to propose a substantially less restrictive version of the bylaw that still advances the interests of the public safety.
So your, your motion, but I think what he means is your motion was to reconsider.
The motion was to reconsider Article 9.
Okay.
Spring forward that.
Okay, he said reconsider when he was up there the first time. Folks, it is very late. I would like to suggest that we move forward on the motion to reconsider, and see what happens before deciding. Okay, well, that's, that's, that's what, that's what we're going to do. Because if you don't want to reconsider the motion, if you want the previous vote to stand, you vote no. Okay, I'm going to call for the vote on the motion to reconsider. It says a majority vote only. If you wish to reconsider the prior vote, which is the vote on Article 9, which voted not to pass Article 9, if you wish to reconsider that, you vote yes. If you don't wish to reconsider it, you vote no. We're not voting, we're not voting yet, we're not voting yet. We're not voting yet. I told people not to do that. I can't help it. All right. The voting is now open. Vote green 1A if you want to reconsider the vote. Red 2B if you do not want to reconsider the vote. Voting is open. Well, I'm sorry, but you... I told people not to hand them in, not to leave, not to go anywhere. I don't know how much- It's fine. Go ahead. Oh, sir, I'm sorry. Ladies and gentlemen, there's evidently been some double voting. I'm going to call the vote off. And Chief Chambers...
I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Second? All in favor of adjourning? All opposed? Please return your clickers back. Please return your clickers.